This is our specialty of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Long Army. Today is April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, six-thirty here in the Commissioners Chambers of the Municipal Building. Follow order and determine if the board is present.
Mayor Casey Bomer.
Here.
Commissioner Sebastian Martinez.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pong.
Here.
Mayor O'Conne.
Great. All right, please rise to the indication by Commissioner Martinez. Oh, I feel like we're really good.
God do mercy upon us and bless us especially who we create. If we may have your guidance in making our decisions at this meeting. We ask this in your name, amen.
Let me just to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do you have any assistance here?
Commander.
Yes.
Okay, that's Commander. What do you do there, Amer? American Legion Corps four-six-six here in Long Army. I would like to extend our appreciation to the mayor. Casey Bomer for his support and friendship to our legion. And just really appreciate how you've taken care of us for the last two years that you were here. I guess it's your last meeting, right? Public meeting? So anyway, I wasn't gonna give you a certificate, but naturally my computer went down this morning. So help me out, it's all yours. So anyway, our legion would like to, as they say in the Navy, have fair winds and following seas and retrieve your endowments. Thanks a lot for everything you've done.
All right, thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you for that number means to you. Yeah, I do. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I get to use baby stuff.
They said that. Thank you. Very kind. We're gonna move on to our consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes and approval of police statistics. So we have the approval of minutes for April seventh meetings and the approval of the police statistics report. Do you guys like to make a motion?
I make a motion. Minutes and the police statistics.
All right, motion to the May to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, move on to number two. Discuss, consider, take, pause, selection to approve March twenty-two, five, financial update. I'm gonna go through a couple of the items. Add a couple of questions. I'll go through them. I'll open up to any other questions. For our contracts, I would say this is kind of a big one, right? So this is through March. This is our first.
Um, yeah, oh, it's true.
So how, how, how long is this through?
That's probably three months.
Okay. I noticed on the report, we got quite.
Quite a bit.
Yeah, so hopefully that would come up.
Yeah, it's actually gonna be with the federal for this long, we have to pay too.
Given that we're halfway through the year, so if anything under fifty percent on our revenues would be an item to pay attention to. One being contract tolling and nineteen percent, but if that's three months behind.
That's not all.
Yeah, and it looks like it could be more. Traffic violations, thirty-four percent, that's a bit low.
But we did just send out, I think we told you over the forty-seven thousand dollars to the line marker. That's not leaning at all towards the show class being, we've been doing.
Did they give any kind of anticipation on what collection it is? It's kind of the first big final year, just.
Yes. So it's kind of, they, they don't collect the money. They make contacts with the people to give us and make payments directly to us. There is a report that we need monthly to show how many, how many of the stations paid are a result of line marker. But I think the, I think it would be the next report that we think I'll show exactly what we.
Okay, so not sure what we. So that's the civil collections, so we.
So the civil collections, but the thing with that is they're all gonna be traffic fines. The civil collection part, the thirty percent that goes to line marker is actually taken in and it's a spent. So it, it should show, I guess, I guess there will be a issue with that.
So we're zero percent of the, because I started with line marker, line marker. That's a hundred and eight thousand meeting that we were budgeted to collect from the county. Our impound lots, we just were discussing that here a little bit. That's another running hole in our budget. Other than that, we're tracking some items like rebuilding permits.
There's, it's actually, where's the building permits? So it's actually gonna be double on the next mark.
Great. So our impound lots and our civil collections, two holes. As less our actual revenues versus our budgeted revenues, or take our budgeted revenues cut it in half. For short, a hundred fourteen thousand for the years. For our expenses, insurance, sixty-two percent. So on the, on expenses, we're bringing over fifty percent.
Right, so the, the insurance, uh, there was an adjustment from a big twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two. So they decreased what we owed for that period. So we, I think it was an extra three thousand dollars I think on that. And then I did just get another T and L, R and P bill for another twelve thousand dollars. So.
That's what else is required?
That was for sure. But they didn't increase our.
So we have to do doubles.
I have to see how we want to. Because we've already, we've already paid three. So I'm not sure if this is allowed to be.
Sold out. Look, that's gonna be wrong. A lot of our money.
Because they're not helping pay because they're.
Are those a little high, but those are good numbers.
More just for the campground.
Animal control expense, that really good.
There's enough.
Then I see where we have our sponsorships. On the last page of the general fund, where we have our sponsorships for the Hall of Honor Festival. And then twenty-five thousand dollar donation. So all in all, for our expenses, we're actually under what we would. So we're budgeted to spend one point three five four, fifty percent of that, sixty-seven seven thousand. We've spent six hundred four thousand, so luckily we're under our expenses seventy-two thousand. But the difference between our short revenue and our lower expenses were off about forty-one thousand dollars so far. Which could equate to everything of double these last six months to the next six months, we're a whole eighty-three thousand dollars in a year. So my big question, we have a couple of revenue items that we're now gonna be able to collect on. One, the contract selling is lower.
The contract term was actually three and the, the.
About twenty thousand.
Yeah.
The civil collections, a hundred thousand, but we just gave one hundred forty-two.
We just, we just sent out a hundred forty-seven, but we have gone through a year that we can send. They just won't let us assume it's them all at once.
Yeah. So if we could collect half or even thirty-five percent of that.
Then we're, we're also having their trials now and we're doing it two quarters a month. So when they miss court, we're having the show count that same week for them to answer whether they miss court. And after that way it works, so we're also like putting out warrants too, so. I think, uh, how many warrants she, a hundred and fifty or so? You know how many warrants were issued?
I'm not too sure on the warrants. Uh, that would get into a.
Right now.
Right now.
Well, that, that, that's what the board.
I, I think it's about a hundred and fifty and then there's probably death sign next week.
So.
And then also we've got the two part-time positions. Uh, our public works that we have for part-time, we have the college for part-time, so that's been open for a half. And then my part-time position has been open for two, three months, so that's good.
Yeah, we can focus on the revenue items. Those are all good. We're under expenses. That'd be great. If we could just double that. Remember, so short, three, if you can make that up.
We can make that up.
Uh, now that line marker is not in the equation, we know we can double off two thousand short. Yeah, I mean, so if we could, if those two assumptions are true, we might.
And they prove.
In what?
They improve.
And then that one, that is double. Did I have one question? So should three through the street maintenance?
Eighteen.
Yeah.
Just there.
Yeah. I thought we were gonna say that.
That is being out. That is open farm. That was several. And that's when they came out and they did the studies on rural streets.
Right. I don't have any other questions. We're finding this a little bit.
I think I do.
Can we make a motion?
Yeah.
Really, yeah. March twenty, twenty-five financial updates.
All right, motion has been made to approve the March twenty-two, five financial updates. Is there a second? I guess one second. All those in paper. I have most passes. All right, we're gonna go on to number three. There's a point of privilege. I'm gonna go ahead and read three and five together. We're all sitting here, uh, for some updates there. Number three, discussion and updates regarding sewer project. Five, discussion and updates from City Engineer Department, parts of the projects.
I think that's. No, I told her we called.
This is Ida.
Hi, Ida. This is Casey Bomer.
Yes, sir.
I've got you on speaker here with the board.
Okay.
And we just read into session B, a couple of items. One, a sewer project update and then also water study and other projects. So we can all talk about the sewer first. We'll talk about any updates on the water study. And then we received here impound lot drawing and we can also look at. And then if there's any other updates in the street maintenance program, we're curious to know.
Sure, yeah. Um, you wanna start with the sewer?
So, so on the sewer, um, Melba submitted that grant today, asking for a million dollars.
Yeah, it was pretty early, isn't it?
That's the, that's the max. So we applied for the max. So we'll see what they say.
Which district is this?
The Southwest Border Commission. It's the one that ACOM put out in short this month.
Okay. So we're, I think we had our last conversation, we had some back and forth with SAWs. Uh, we had some concerns over the letter. But apparently Julio had speaking with Tracy. Was it become that they don't need those updated letters now? The letters we have provided as well as the engineering reports, we have our sufficient for those to finish the engineering process. Uh, so what, you know, my big concern was obviously that letter not having, so the letter that the landowners needed to commit to the utility service agreement. Prior to the utility service agreement being available. Tracy basically came back and said, yes, that's still gonna be a condition for them to finish the process, but they don't need it now. So they'll need it prior to execution of the utility service agreement. If they don't need those letters to get to the utility service agreement. So by the time the landowner signing that letter, we'll already have a USA, a national review. And that was kind of a take a pick up. The last time we all kind of talked, I know last week was good Friday. We didn't get another update. I don't know if you have anything new from Julio and the team outside of the last single.
I don't know. Um, so it'd be nice to hear tomorrow, we still have our, you know, big meeting. Where they're at. I had written down the laundry paper and over and saw that she sent me her personal number. And then just shortly after that, it's when Julio went, uh, Victor's today, I had that conversation with Tracy, so it's pulled off. So they take it back and said, no more about it. So, um, but, uh, but you know, I can always get back and talk to her and meet it. But hopefully things are just moving forward to know how to work with her, but it's like a, like a loss that we need to wait.
But I'm gonna move it forward. We still haven't gotten our updated timeline, so that's kind of one issue.
Yeah.
We haven't got an updated budget. There's several items we've requested from South Texas Engineers. There's been several back rounds, back and forth with SAWs. With, you know, new requirements and they've submitted those as far as I know, everything's been submitted. Now we're waiting to get from SAWs to respond. But it really seems like the timeline is changing so much that it's really hard to fit.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what they are. Maybe it needs to be, maybe we can get a meeting earlier next week with that. But okay, now that we know SAWs is pretty much on the board with us, we need an updated schedule. And it needs to fit within the timeline of the current. So, you know, I think it'd be good, I'd reach out and then you guys would like to, or about, or maybe like. Just like, hey, stop working on that revised schedule. And also be updated process to that and have that like private meeting.
We've asked for that.
Several.
We've asked for that several times.
So we got that tomorrow, yeah.
We've asked for that several times.
Well, the last three.
Every time we talk, actually, we brought this up. This last one, this one. I understand that they've been concerned because SAW basically rejected that last of the mill and we've had a few rounds of. Uh, fairly negative feedback from SAWs. And that keeps kind of pushing things back, but here we are in April, just trying to accomplish what we thought we were accomplishing back in December, in November.
Right, yeah, absolutely. So I think now that SAWs is, uh, I think that, you know, that now that SAWs is the joint event with us, Street USA. There's no more cases for them to give us a repaired schedule. And also estimate at this point in time. So, you know, we'll just let them know that we need it by next week and we said it in my, I mean, we can even, even, even next Friday is better than hoping that any. So I think we just put that pressure on her. Maybe we just said it at one state beginning because my credit, you know, we all agree here that that's great, but let's ask her about her guidance from this day.
Okay. Uh, as far as grants that we have applications for, I know we have applied to Texas Water and Long Army Board. You applied for a grant, the, um, part of the grant proposals from a few months ago. We just applied for the ACOM grant. What other, um, items do you have in the file in that board?
Um, uh, we have that same principle that we actually made a warrant, it's just, uh, uh, whether they come out with a federal grant or a cause. They didn't say that, I mean, but the warrant was taken away. They're just waiting for the funding to be released.
It meant more so sewer related, but yes, direct on that.
Yeah, um, yeah, I guess the one that Valerie just mentioned, that we picked up one. Um, and Melba, does Valerie have a couple more that we can, you know, ask for you guys? Um, and I think one of them at least is fully funded. I think the other one would be like a seventy thirty split. Or they basically be, and she thinks the grant would pay thirty or like a three or four point that. But, um, we can present those to, to y'all. Or next week, you know, um, our, our resident council may, or we may just like to see this.
Great. We're all, uh, that would take the whole, the ball game water. Low interest savings.
Yeah, that might be more of a, but that would be more of a, you know.
All right, now, I was just looking at stuff right here.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, and it's like constantly in there, we've been facing things like that, so should we lay some greater information? We're just getting it pretty good. Do you have any, do you have any to go after or any?
Anyway, we need the updated schedule for the budgets and now we're, we're applying for them. So we're supposed, we're supposed to get that instead. Uh, I don't know if I can, like, it's fine.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, is there, are we done with those here?
Uh, is there any questions for Ida regarding sewer, which is one of the topics? That's what we're trying to get. We need the timeline moved so many times that we don't have a term. There's been a lot of back and forth with SAWs. They've unfortunately been difficult. And that keeps pushing things, but we really need the updated timeline. Now that SAWs is at least making some progress, it seems, right, Ida? It seems they're making progress to me.
Yeah, to me this, yeah. I think that last call they had with Tracy was very, very positive, so.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
We're, we're all kind of panicked that he was trying to call us down, so that'd be difficult.
What about, um, we were talking to the chief attorney about having the grant refunded instead of, I mean, a refund.
Yeah, do you have to make any progress with that?
Um, and my understanding is that it has been switched off the line. Oh, sorry, instead of reimbursing.
Instead of being a reimbursement, because before it was the archive, now it's the county.
Nonparticiple.
Oh, oh. Okay, any other questions on sewer? All right, let's talk about the water.
So we're pretty happy done with the water, but it, um, it's just a, we need to, still, I, I got a response in the front row. Over there. Um, you wanna have this, see this closing?
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, like, hey, this is your neighbor, and he, you know, he comes up today and for sure, like, I would say. He goes, I hope you have a problem and, you know, again, it's very, I go, is it, that's okay, I'll take it. And then I forgot to take back and then I pulled up a group and I looked it up. This is probably about four, five weeks ago. Um, and so then I finally was able to figure out who that engineer was there, what was at that one eight. So I made, he is on a call, they left him a message, uh, to call me back. He was on the reason for the floor and he was calling me back later. So what we did is just, what we have right now, we're gonna send it to you, I'm saying tomorrow. It's, it's the latest SAWs information, uh, we base the eight years on our latest master plan. And, um, you know, we're gonna show, we'll be a residential, commercial, things like that. And then we, we, as far as that is good, water, which is with the old stuff, I got back, I did, and all of it. So it's not here from, we have the working. So, so we have that, um, but you know, we don't think that it had any change. This was unfortunate, I can't give that information, but, you know, we can definitely send you what we have for now. And then we can turn it even in, while we can do it with you guys, if you all have a career.
Yeah, it'd be great if we could, if we have now, I think that's, uh, pretty frustrating from that side of stuff. I've asked over the last several times and have been getting responses. I don't know what's going on with your engineers. But, um, we're young stuff for a long time.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll continue on, um.
Great, to, to be updated, you know, what you have now, to be updated, what's there about, since it's smart. I don't think they've done much since then, but.
Yeah.
Just the way.
Yeah. We can, we're out there, they, you know, and then we, I'll also get out, you know. And I mean, actually, we're going out here, I told them all about it, usually like that's so great, they get to that because they have to have the grants as well. They, uh, you know, that have the information, so, so I think, I think we'll get, you know, the grants too.
Yeah, and I'll mention, that was a big question. I went to a commercial, uh, commercial real estate auction deal. Where they got to talk to several cities, the DC games there, Converse, and the Nines there. And that was the one big question. We talked about sewer project, you know, the Long Army, the Long Army and that. That was the big question they had with water. And actually, we're just gonna give them the, the better answer. Um, but I know that's a topic that's on the mind of the investor and developer community. So it's good we're doing this, but, you know, we need to deal with coming up. And once we have the study, then we need to come up with a plan, maybe, you know, this. Knowing what's needed and what we can improve or what we need, those public partnerships, solving the water. Where we kind of looked at the sewer before, um, water can be another integral piece.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, um, yeah, those discussions, we're calling it, maybe maybe what was SAWs is how this water is. Looking everybody. Um, I don't know what's up with them. Maybe they're scared of water, but, you know, maybe with, with SAWs on the way to water. Because they're not making them, uh, to, just get everybody.
Are you a member of CCIN?
Uh, I used to be. I was at the, uh, advisory council.
CCIN Institute.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not there. No, I was, I was on the SAWs advisory council for about six years way back in the day.
They had a drawing in Idaho Control, it was the winner, was drawn by the head. Anyway. I don't know. Okay.
That's the, I mean, I'm on the.
Yeah, well, you would have won four dollars.
Oh, you don't want that. Um, so, okay, so we'll just go ahead and then just wrap it up. You know, if you all could kind of take a look at it and if you have any comments or, or any discussion on it. Um, and then you can, um, we said, not to you, so look at it. Like, that's missing, um, I mean, the process is in, um, what are we, I guess, we're gonna do it. Um, and we'll analyze the process then, so that I, uh.
But I don't understand, looking at this, so we just got, right? And I see, so I gotta pull it up. I see the parking lot in the back. I see a road. Where is this, where is the, where does city fall? That's the white.
City hall right here.
It's the, uh, I mean, it's.
So does this road, to me, it looks like this road goes on the other side of the building. Uh, it's like in between. Oh. So when we say C O, we're on the blue building. Is that road in between the blue building and then here's the place?
I know, there's, I'm writing.
Okay.
Yeah, the road just in the, uh, where.
Yeah, yeah. So it's kind of the existing driveway coming back around and then back behind the blue building. Where it's actually flat, kind of. Okay.
And there's some old light bits left there, so. Some light in there right there, and we just were doing them right here.
You have like some parking spaces drawn on here? Um, that are all, there's only twenty-four states, so assuming that, is that just for show?
That's, that's for show, yeah, yeah.
We do, right, and that was from.
Absolutely.
How big is that area?
Oh, good question. I should, um, but we can get it, I can get some information.
Yeah.
I have some picture for the majesty, uh, something.
I think it looks good. I think it looks good, so the next step is processment?
Yeah, if you go, um, well, you can, I don't know, I think this, they, they can see it, and then I can, I can sign and seal it. Uh, and then, yeah, fill out the processment, and then, yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you have any comments about it, correct me?
I mean, we don't have to do it, we just, we can just.
What is the material, you need a gravel driveway?
Um, we're gonna use, uh, something similar to what you guys have, uh, the city hall that we're working on, so that's what, uh, what's called, that you guys were releasing, or like that.
Asphalt release?
Yeah, something like that, and, rap, recycle asphalt, one of those lines.
I see you have a gate. Is that, uh?
We're, we're kind of, we're gonna. With staff.
The gate? So. So what's, so they're gonna do their processment, I mean, I think this is applying a bit for an outdoor, that like, uh, whole process in the middle, look at options, it's going to be, now, so that would be. So we have the budget, and then once we have the budget, count the actual work, so your budget, next.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll analyze it next, next week, um, I can go in town.
Okay.
And, um, this weekend, this is done as well, I was on, I just kept them, I'm here, but I told them, I'll be here, I'll sort of, like, extend it, now, great. That was, so, definitely speaking, I'll do it there, but once you get it, um, well, you know, we can analyze that one every day, and, but that one, I would get as well.
Okay. Okay, let's have a good, so my intent, uh, with this is to kind of get everything to a certain point, and then we can turn it over, kind of go through that process, make sure some of these kind of priorities continue to be going. Uh, so maybe we can get everything kind of turned in over the next couple of weeks, then we can revisit it, and then, um, just along the transition. Any other questions for Ida?
Mine.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ida.
Okay, there you go, stay here.
All right, number four, discussion and updates regarding animal control facility.
Well, I see the, uh, we did have inspected, so we got a temporary, I should think, about, we should use up for the, um, we got the. Chief and the art. Instead of us creating a contract for today installation, they did, they did, yeah, they did it. And then ours, our installed the, it says it's about four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I love that.
Um, our installed the, um, exhaust fan, it's a big configuration, so, it's, as soon as we get that wireline ready, um, we're, we don't have the same already. So they just, you know, the wireline is, uh, you know.
Is that any sequence, I said? Um, yeah, that'd be great.
As soon as we can get into that building, we try to, we have to.
Uh, okay, I said, just maybe, I'm not, I'm attracted, but if we, I feel that, like, metal roofs, that white, elastic, yeah, try and reflect it. And then I was, uh, she showed me, uh, we look at the doors, I'd be curious, with the AC drawing, bases not small, that the area, sun beating down on it, and some electric coating without. But if, where the doors slide up and down, and there's cracks, I know obviously the door has to open down, put it, put it, insulated, put that garage lift, uh. It's pretty cheap, like, just being a certain AC.
All they have to do is make sure that it's saved at eight hundred, so, we could test it with that, and see what it's, what it is performing to.
Right, so, uh, you said, the inspector, that's our inspector.
That's the building inspector, yes, when we get the wireline installed, we'll see from our, you know.
So, all right, two weeks out.
As soon as we get the wireline. We need it, or we can use it for apples.
Would you like to be right next to us, to add?
I just wanna know, where is it, the, the location?
It's in that building, one of those, used to be the big shed, uh.
Well, it's already there.
Yeah, it's already there, it's been, got epoxy ground, it's been insulated on the inside, it's cleaned out, uh.
It's ready to go. Add on?
We put in drains, we put in, uh, pumps, so it's got certain regulations, that's how it's where it can be cleaned regularly, we've got drains, it's got the AC. Uh, and so we received a donation from a private individual, um, that's been a little covered with cost, mostly cost three five thousand dollars, uh, which we received that donation. And thankfully, uh, we've been able to execute the plan and try to get it inspected, so at least we have a facility that's the dogs can be detained. Uh, that's kind of the problem, we're starting foods, we detain them, and then we've got to work with all these different agencies to find, try and find some new room. Now at least we'll have some kennels, but some space of our own, food can be more proactive with containment.
So, the dock, all the indoors are?
Yeah, the outdoors, yeah, the dock, and it's got this nice epoxy floor that can be cleaned, it's, the, the trains.
I just want to, you know, how you feel, it's, we are, we go, you know, close to the fire, and we don't.
Yeah, that's right. And hopefully it's not forever, uh, seventy-two hours, right?
Um, you, you should, um, make sure that those, you, thank you.
We should dedicate the building, the July, uh, individual, we made a donation, so. Okay, any other comments on this?
So, um, chief has been working pretty closely with the vet, and so, um, I think we'll be able to do it later, and watch.
So we got the chip training.
That's what I said, I said, several officers went over there, to start second, uh, February tenant, and they pretty much gave us training, for hiring chip, uh, and dogs. So we can keep track of them, but, we live alone sometimes, uh, you know, like, they're out there, they know, straight dogs on the street, so I just wanted to know.
Yeah, and it's not chips, you know, that's the city ordinance, and, we all can get a chip, we have the materials to do it, something, uh, really discouraging, I learned that. We hadn't been doing since we passed that ordinance, and then we went and bought the gun, and hadn't been used.
Been used.
Yeah, hadn't been used.
Probably did so.
And they train at free of charge. Yeah, so now we're trained, we've got them located, and we're aware, there's sort of, paying chips and dogs that's needed.
That's true.
Yeah, and Dr. Green helped us out some, that's a big strike, it's been made, unable to control, in the, recent past. All right, number six, discuss, consider, and take possible action regarding the electrical line right away agreement with CPS.
We did, started with CPS representative, who had said that we will be able to look up to it, and they're charged, and so. They couldn't tell me what, you know, what, what it's gonna be used for, what each user is, just, they can, we need some kind of.
They got a Facebook?
You know, I wasn't, we discussed that the other morning, that was one bad, so.
I, I have this anxiety case.
They're gonna give us free hookups, whatever.
They take a question, where it's gonna be?
Yes. It's on the far side of that, yeah, I don't know, but, uh.
That would have been back in the year.
So coverage, so that's the show.
Okay.
They can take it, it's, 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 yeah. They couldn't tell us where we're going, that was a question, um, you get free hookups, that's cool. Is there any other existing services over there? I assume so.
There is water, but I don't know if it's probably before our property, so that's, they can do it before our property.
Okay, so do we have any other feedback, we've discussed it twice, Jacob repeated it, we were unsure of the CPS agreement, but we wanted to take it, and we'll take it. Or.
We cleared approval, they got it.
Yeah, they're gonna do it, all right. So, do you like?
I have the option, and we approve these, and that's safe, so that's just gonna, for our half profit.
All right, motion made to approve the electrical line right away agreement CPS energy, for a second.
Second.
All right, and second, all those in favor? Motion passes. Do you have a second, right now? Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Number seven, discuss, consider, and take possible actions regarding, on our, here's our letter, for the, uh, two. So we discussed this last time, uh, I'd like to make the, the requests that, uh, I asked for, to limit. So I think it's, kind of meets the feedback I had last time. Re-terminated at any time, kind of talks about conflicts, limited to, uh, city facilities for operations. Um, keeps it out of the back offices, keeps it in the balcony areas, so. Feedback, I, quite last time, I feel like I incorporated, so I'd like to, uh, requires a monthly report, and a monthly report, too.
I'm gonna motion that, we have that, that's, uh, that's only one I'm prepared, it's gonna be in all of the other things, right, uh, same. That we're considering, I'm sponsored from the program, right, this, maybe on the, and to include that, uh, where the region, um, support, community. Not clearly, just, assist services.
Okay, there's like this service, the walk-in pantry, community, senior citizen services, library, job training, utility assistance. Home repairs for low income, beauty closets for clothing merchants. What was? Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion, we should, we should, we should, uh, we should.
All right, motion made, uh, to part of the armed peers, in the form of facility use agreement, is that right? We have to include the, right, for the facility use agreement, for a second, just have, I have a second, all those in favor? All right, motion passes.
Uh, we'll say, um, I applied for home market, and I collected five thousand dollars from the library, uh, they can resort out. We're getting started. We actually got that, yes.
All right, number eight, discuss, consider, take possible action regarding city zoning ordinance, all manners, right there, too. Brandon, would you like to go through the changes, uh, that's the most, latest version from the one to the last, the seventh commission?
Yes, sir. Uh, so, at the last one, the commission meeting, we talked specifically about zoning aspects of the occupancy development code. Uh, the chapters specifically order of chapter two districts, uh, chapter three occupancies, uh, we talked specifically about, uh, chapter thirteen sites. Uh, chapter fourteen buildings, um, and chapter fifteen signs, um, those. Chapter chapters specifically have regulations, uh, that derive their authority from chapter two eleven, or we don't have that, which is, uh, chapter that gives the city the authority to, uh, enact zoning regulations. And so, uh, out of that meeting, the primary changes that came out of that were to allow manufactured homes, uh, with certain limitations in the art district. And the specific changes y'all asked for, uh, were to allow manufactured homes, provided they were on, uh, footings. Uh, and provided that they had skirting, uh, and that they be no more than ten years old, that's what I had. Uh, so I meant that they have permanent use table to have a build, uh, in the art district, which, you know, uh, right now, all, there's only one residential, only district, so we definitely do. Is that what allow manufactured homes on any residential lot in the city, provided they comply with those three regulations.
And then there's also the variance process, too, for manufactured homes, well, I'm just curious, variance process in general?
Uh, well, in the state of Texas, you can't get a variance for use, so, uh, yeah, so, so you can get a use, or you can get a variance for, uh, development regulations, like, somebody, uh. Like, for example, uh, you can't put a manufactured home in commercials, right? You can't put one in, you know, on the highway, uh, on one of these worship grounds, so you couldn't get a variance to be able to, to do that, because that's a use. You know, in the state of Texas, uh, the law is that if you want to be able to conduct a use, uh, within a zoning district, if that use is not allowed, you have to get a zone change to the district that does it. Or, you could request a plain development district if it's like a larger development, meets the criteria, uh, you can only get variances for dimensional types of things, or, uh, you know, uh, development related things. So, say somebody came in and they wanted to put a manufactured home, uh, say they passed this code, and you're allowed that manufactured home, provided you comply with these limitations. Say they didn't want to put a skirting on it, they were like, I don't want skirting, I like putting under the, a whole manufactured home. They could get a variance, they could ask for a variance and not have to do skirting, or say they have a manufactured home that's thirty years old, right? So it says that's the, it's like the, you could get a variance for that, yeah.
That's, that's more what's appropriate, I'm sorry, just to cap everybody off, you know, we've gone through this several times, we've spent a year and a half on this, it's here. Where we went last time, there was a bit of a, you know, disagreement, um, between, make, on, really, top to manufactured home, whether they're gonna be allowed in the existing residential districts or not. You know, I've been very, uh, positive for manufactured homes, uh, I like what we've incorporated here, rather than not allowing it at all. Um, but that's really mainly based off of surveys, so we did a survey, and that feedback we got in the survey was valuable, it kind of supported, uh, changing it to allow four manufactured homes. You know, with two hundred, there were like four hundred fifty-eight accounts, I think, tax against the city, two hundred fifty for manufactured homes, so it's, um, not something that I think we can ex out. And so, what this is, uh, incorporated, are certain stipulations, so the existing residential houses, residential zone properties can't have manufactured homes. Um, any existing use is grandfathered can be replaced, um, but any residential lot would allow for manufactured homes. The stipulations, though, is collective of the board, are those three items, and we're gonna add, and so, there is a skirting, which I think for the health and safety of the home. I'm very supportive of a home maybe that's skirting, there's a lot of reasons as to why, and it's really helps the health. Um, originally, there was a request for concrete foundation, but that's not quite affordable, and it doesn't really help, because the homes are up here, and being, so, as a no ground, we come with our, I would say, concrete pillars. I still think a base pad of collegiate A services the same intent. I still think a base pad of collegiate day services, the same intent. First, the concrete footer is a little more expensive. But grounds do shift over time. Concrete footers do have a little bit incremental benefit for the home's health. I'm gonna. A pad. Although the collegiate pad is more of an option. And then the age restriction. That's something I kind of, kind of go from. I've seen other cities implement this age restriction. So, my question to Brandon was the variance for one of those items. So, if somebody does have a thirteen-year-old home, I think it's kind of similar arbitrary to pull it today. Now, like ten years. Uh, I know that's what we discussed last time. I've thought a lot about this since then. Uh, I personally have one business of homes that are thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. I can talk about the history of manufactured housing. Federal government came in standard accountability processes in October nineteen ninety-six. So, I've always thought anything built from then to now are built to the same kind of standards as long on today. Uh, and so I kind of look at the lens of looking at like older homes, like pre nineteen sixty-six. But with all that age said, um, they can still apply for a variance. So, that's what's open for anybody is those three items.
So, I would recommend that you guys ask the question. What circumstances would you think that a variance would be reasonable to approve? Because. The case law, and this is for stuff that's gone all the way up to Supreme Court. And this is Texas law too. And this is even state law. It's codified in the local government. Variances are. Only supposed to be given out when someone has disabled and demonstrated a unique hardship that nobody else has. And so, it's like it has to be based on a hardship that's an unnecessary hardship. Which means like if someone comes in and they say. I, I need, I want to put a twenty-year-old manufactured home because I can't afford it. That's not, that's not, uh, a viable reasoning, right? It's not a reason that's been acknowledged by the courts as a, as a good reason to give somebody a variance just because they can't afford it. Or because, you know, they can't afford the footings. It's only, it's only when it's, it's something that is outside of their control. It's just, it's totally, you know, uh, it's, it's not. And so, that's why I say, don't, I wouldn't recommend that y'all say, well, you know, we feel comfortable with these three things. Because someone might always give a variance and we can give those to them. I would say if y'all think that those three things are something that you think is, it's a fair, it's a good thing to do and maybe get it out to some people and they have a good reason. The mechanism for that is a special exception. And, and a special exception means there's gonna be, there's gonna probably be a lot of situations. There's a good example of how cities use special exceptions is, uh, a lot of times you can use special exceptions to approach, you know, a front or set at my foot. You know, sometimes on cul-de-sacs, it's a little hard. It's, it's one of those things, it's like, does anybody get an eye over one foot? No. And so, a special exception gives y'all more flexibility and kind of acknowledges, this is something we anticipate giving out from time to time. And so, if you guys want to provide flexibility for those three things, I, I would recommend that you go for a special exception. And then maybe you come up with some criteria for, here's what will be about a special exception. You know, if the people next door don't mind or, I don't know what those reasons are.
But technically, we have special exceptions.
We have special exceptions. I've, I've written special exception provisions for you guys in the general procedures section. It would be very easy just to add, if you go up to general procedures. And go to session one point. Uh, I'm sorry.
One point zero seven.
One point zero, it's actually, this is seven.
Eighty-four?
Yeah, yeah, one point zero seven, thanks. Uh, and one point zero seven, uh. It's one point zero seven. It's my computer, it's just scratching on here. Yeah, see. So, you can see I've already got a few in there. You know, I think we've talked about these before. These are the ones that I just recommend, you know. Special exceptions allow non-performing uses to expand in certain areas. So, I'd recommend, you know. Again, if those three accept, if those three conditions. Are things that you want to be more flexible for your citizens. A special exception is the way to do it. So, frankly, you're just opening yourself up for liability if you. With variances, you really don't.
So, I respect those three items because this is a product of a lot of effort for. Like, we've all, like, that's the middle ground that we've all kind of come to, to be able to have those three. What I've thought about since is having that mechanism. I like what you're saying with the special exception. Because there are people that we know in the city who might come to us and say, hey, I've told you all about them. Or, you know, whatever, having a mechanism with a little bit of flexibility in there or there's a special exception. What allows future boards a little bit of discretion, um, to deny or not, you know, if it doesn't meet those three things. But that's as far as like a standard basis for those three things that we've all kind of put our feedback into. Taking our survey, taking our feedback, some couple of those three things, we keep that, that sort of applies to everything. But just having another avenue in the case that somebody can't conform to those three things, three still have. Well, so do we need to add it? And that's what I'm.
Yeah, you need, so. The way special exceptions work, um, is it's different.
We're the various three, so we either have things in.
You need to, we would need to add, you know, right now, we've got one, two, three. Uh, one, two, and three, no, wait. Special exception.
The continued usage.
So, I need to add a, another one in there, after number three. You know, the, uh, to allow the placement of a manufactured home within the R district. Um, without, uh, applying skirting or, or being older than ten years. Or not being on concrete footers. Uh, provided the following. So, if you look at the one and the two and the three there. There's, there's certain, uh, conditions that need to be met in order for a special exception to be approved. Say look at number two. The board can approve a special exception for the encroachment of a new single-family home. Or addition to an existing single-family home provided at least one property which directly abuts the subject property to a similar non-performing encroachment. And known directly voting property or subject under. And so, what you're doing this year, that's the point of the special exception is. As long as they're requesting not put in skirting, or as long as they're requesting to put in a twenty-year-old manufactured home. As long as they can demonstrate to the board that these two things. Exist, these two circumstances exist, then y'all, uh, then y'all. Y'all approve a special exception. So, the question is, is, that's why I would say I, I recommend y'all ask, under what conditions would you find relief from those three limitations? For the skirting?
I would say the skirting.
Yeah, for the age or the footing. What, what could you possibly imagine with the integrity of the building if somebody believed or not?
Yeah, the owner. So, you have, the owner occupied was not one. You had some of the initial. And then, uh, yeah, one per lot. So, that's, I think, what you originally had is the language that we swapped out for this three things.
Yep.
I think that would be.
Yeah, but that's, that's a good point.
As a special exception. Cool, but not to apply the skirting because more so, to see if you're like, somebody has a twelve-year-old home. And we all like it, or the future board likes it, or if they want to appeal trying to get out of concrete footers. Or, but that's something to be considered. If it meets that criteria, it's unoccupied. It's one per lot. Really is.
Would it have to be expected or? How would you operate?
Yeah. It would, we need to have the board, we need to have pictures, there needs to be kind of like.
Well, I would say, you know, the way that process works is, say, in this circumstance, you have somebody that bought a piece of land. And they purchased a manufactured home. It's a, you know, they own the land, it's an unoccupied structure. They can illustrate that to you guys. They would come to you first and get, get the special exception. And then, you know, after a meeting like this where they get the special exception. Then, chances are they probably have a concurrent building department application, uh, applied to with the city.
You could move.
Yeah, exactly. And then, and then all of the.
I'm doing a basement age. So, if you're already given an exception basically, you.
We were making a title. And we'd need the other one for the serial number. And it would need to be approved.
Would, would, would you have to go ahead and submit the exit condition?
Yeah, we'd want to get yours.
You can have it on.
I was just asking.
Everything looks good. I can imagine what it. You know, I think maybe that's a better idea. What we, what we need is a map. Where it says, like, we sit out here, church is over there. Because, you know, the city is not gonna grow here, okay? City is gonna go south. Maybe by ten, ten years from now. People can imagine that, huh? Yeah, I think you see what we're talking about, huh? We need to show the people that, hey, this is the city. This is where the.
And so, and just to put, this specific topic, uh, applies to the legacy, the existing residential zone stuff. So, that's not gonna be the future district. And that's kind of the whole thing with Brandon's, with the new districts he's created, which is a little more stringent. So, like, in the, the future areas that would be annexed or grown into the future, wouldn't apply.
Yeah, but people can't see. They can't see or. We need a plan.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're working on a plan, right?
It says someone that's gonna be good job in a family or a company. They don't understand.
Yeah, well, this doesn't necessarily translate directly to the, I get what you're saying. It's a lot easier to look at the different districts when it comes to the map, the burn map.
Yeah, but we're talking about lots of things. We looked at that part of the picture. We can do the papers and then off after that.
Right, so we got our zoning codes.
Yeah, the codes.
We're gonna approve these codes and then we can finish the map they saw. Because.
Well, this is moving, I mean, we've been talking about this for like twenty years now.
Yeah, eighteen months, yeah. So, with all that in mind, um, I mean, I'd like, Jacob, question, could we approve this? Ending the insertion of the special exception language discussed in there?
I think, I think.
Yeah, there's, so, uh. We, two things. So, the other thing, in addition to the zoning, at the last meeting, I asked the question. Since the whole point of this project that we've been working on has been to create a unified code. We're calling it an occupancy development code, which is what it is. But technically, what, what we've done is we've created a unified code. Uh, which is one cohesive document that has all of the city's development regulations in one. Compact place, which is easy. One, one, you know, it's more of a cohesive thing, but yeah. One cohesive set of rules rather than a lot of cities just have a chapter here and then a chapter down here. It's kind of a mess, it's hard to navigate. And so, in the effort of eating the oil one mine at a time over the last eighteen months, we did the subdivision first. Then we did some of the design standards for infrastructure parks, those different types of things, and now the last pieces. So, I brought up at the last meeting, whether y'all wanted me to go ahead and now, let's repackage everything back together. So, that's what I've done. That's what we have before you, uh, tonight. Uh, and so, I want to make sure, I want to go over a couple of things because in order to, kind of remarry this thing, in order to pull it apart. You had to make this stuff stand alone, right? It couldn't really reference other sections because they weren't connected yet. So, what I've done is sort of piece it back together. Um, and put section notations, uh, in some cases, there are references that have changed. Because now we have to reference different things, like different chapters that exist. And so, my recommendation is, is that you guys look this thing over thoroughly. Um, and make sure you like everything that's in there. Um, the street section in particular, I had to leave certain sentences to different places and change some of the verbiage in there just to make it work. Um, so, again, I don't feel comfortable having you guys, like, just approve this. Because I want to make sure, I want to make sure you look it over.
Yeah, just to verify, on the agenda, we have zoning ordinance?
We said zoning, exactly, yeah.
Not the entire.
Not the whole thing.
We just got this this morning.
Right, exactly. So, yeah, that's why I say, don't, don't, I wouldn't recommend you approve this, Mike, because I don't want to tell the other. That's not exactly what's said before.
So, what has changed?
Well, the definitions.
Definitions is a new one too.
The streets.
The street section, uh, I, I inserted, I just, I made it more user-friendly. Uh, I think it makes more sense the way it's organized, the street section. Uh, but yeah, you've got all the definitions, y'all, you're being definitions or, or make sure you like those definitions. And so, uh, so yeah.
This, this is something to change. Even after we approve.
I mean, I always, you guys have worked, y'all can change anything in here.
That's what I'm saying. So, we could. They're going to think this one was not accepted. We've been on for a while.
What are the chapters that we have approved? The ones that, uh, zoning, the uses. I don't want to be tired, obviously, we've approved them in chapter, putting it all together, let's approve the last pieces. Before we put this all together.
The, the chapters that y'all have not approved yet.
Yeah.
Are, uh, chapter one. General procedures. Chapter two, districts. Chapter three, occupancies. Chapter, uh. Portion, a portion of chapter nine. Uh, because we had taken lots out of that, uh, for lot sizes. Made blocking, but, uh. Couldn't, the lot, lot size has its own function. Uh, we have not approved sites, chapter thirteen. Chapter fourteen, buildings. Chapter fifteen, signs, and the definitions. Very well.
The thing keeps growing.
Actually.
We haven't gone through all of these.
Uh, it's like we have a smaller.
We're here to talk about zoning. That's what we had in our zoning commission meeting, the zoning and uses. These are all new. Definitions is new. Uh, the science is new. I know we've talked about, I think I think some side more than.
That was, that was all of the time, that's what I was thinking that we got to. Uh, because we were focusing on districts. Instead of, uh, district marketplaces, yeah.
Alright. How about, so. Yeah, I, I, can we do this again? We finished this, go through the rest of these items tonight. We want to approve what we discussed with the zoning commission approved. Which was the, uh, districts and occupancies, so, uh, chapters two and three. And then, uh, with the feedback we gave for the special exceptions, that's gonna be chapter one. And you have that already, you can actually. Put those provisions. And then maybe you can pass the whole thing along to the board.
Does this want to go back to zoning?
No, we're gonna do the zoning right now. These are just chapters.
I think it's gonna go back to zoning commission. I don't think so. Because they generally approve the recommendation on approval. And so, the, this board, this law is just making permanent changes to.
Because there's a, in those.
Okay, so. At this time, we may, may like to make a motion to approve chapters two and three of our ODC for districts and occupancies. As recommended by the zoning commission.
Two and three?
Uh, good. We got a motion to approve chapters two and three. Item is consecutive, all those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, and let's schedule something the next day to get this finished. Let's make this special meeting. We'll simply look more as I go through the rest of these chapters, we'll watch the stuff with this. And this, overall, this is good. You go, this is, overall, there's a lot in here. Uh, planning of our district is still my favorite piece. And, uh. Yeah, so here, do the rest of these chapters. I'll keep growing.
Yeah, I'll, I will tell you guys. Uh, if y'all look at other UDCs, you know, typically called UDCs with all this hotness. I, if you look at other cities, you look at. Lanco, you look at Seguin, uh, Shirts, Salma, all these other cities that have occupancies and develop codes. This is half the size, at least half the size of all the others. So, so when you talk about, you know, I know creating regulations in the city is, you know, property rights is really important. I, I would say that, I think, y'all, all of us, you guys are working together, creating a very concise. Article, set of development regulations compared to the other cities. Ninety-seven pages is really small. Um, so, oh, is it?
It says a hundred and one.
Well, we gotta get that a little bit.
When it counts the title page, it counts.
Yeah, it's kind of exactly the title page, so. I, I think this is something. Yeah, it's kind of exactly the title page, so, I, I think this is something.
Can you please send me all the documents, so I can take all the ink off of it? It's expensive.
Oh, that first page, please, right?
We also sent a redline version, so it's, so every day, it's in its latest, certain sixteen chapter. Okay, um, that's it. We're going into executive session for items nine. Executive session of orders made sure for several rights, and then executive session, persons, and the test of the exacts, including the adaptation section five dot one, seriously, one, five dot one, thirty-two, five five one, open to this, and point in the session.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna get started again. So we're just coming out of executive session and it's 8:06. Number nine, discuss considering possible action regarding possible police air opportunities. No action. Remove unattended. Updates regarding city business, municipal court, police department, and all that are cleared there.
We need to talk about the library grants. How much we can help that court function. We have trials on the period. We've been having more trials with. Well, this one will be hearing.
Jury process.
How's that been with the jury process?
Uh. We, I don't think we heard, we said how the jurors.
Oh, very.
And somehow we must have taken the oldest out of our own. Most of them have been recent. They just took them at random off the door roll to the city. So.
Does it have to be the city?
Yeah.
From the city.
It's a large jurisdiction. And how many jurors are there?
We need three per trial. Uh, three different ones. Three jurors per trial. We're listing here that like. And then we would like to have six total. So we can kind of alternate, it'll make some batch. But the general opinion.
So we've sent out.
What?
We probably have eleven or ten shady little offenders.
So that.
What will say?
That's probably that's a show page.
I mean, they could still serve it.
Yeah, this is the first one we've had since before COVID. And so there's been the, uh, a little bit of learning curve and economic analysis.
Yeah.
On everything. Just as there's still a jury fee that has to be paid for, right? And so which would sure be without other jurors with what we can reason with this thing.
So the, the resident resident juror has to pay a jury fee? Um, we think the jury fee is one hundred twenty dollars each year. It's twenty one dollars.
But there's only one.
No, no, there's.
No, we don't have any.
Eighty?
Oh, no, this is the first one since COVID.
And lucky for us, just he said it was a district that was very young, so he was going to get them.
How many are you going to show up? So that'll.
No idea.
Would be one day?
No, we're in.
All good. How often do these, you elevate them to the jury process?
Most of them are probably going to be CDLs. Uh, those drivers are of a higher standard. And so they are allowed to offer them any sort of deferral or opportunity to get it off their record. And so their only chance to get it off their record is a not booked jury. Uh, and so a lot of CDL drivers will say, well, I take my chances to try. If anything, it just sort of all seem to stay on my record. Uh, so.
You can see our CDL would pass it through.
Oh, no, they, they, because it counts against their license and they can't drive. They, they must get out of there. They will fight them.
So you could fifty, get caught up in one day. So we probably won't end up on for another year.
Uh, we have a little bit of a lot of people asking for trial. So our thought is once we get caught up, then we can maybe do one two.
Okay. Yeah. Next one.
Thank you. Next seventy five is the cutoff. Seventy five.
You have anything you want to tell them about the PD? Oh, only if you were to ask them that. To know whether it was because there was a bill for COVID. Pretty much get rid of regarding the prices. And so I testified that in the same town before. So have to pay for our officers. Um, we didn't get actual that before. So not even. But some of the agency, but now we went to try. There's probably fifteen police officers. There were more at the city, but I didn't say it, but um.
Who's that supported?
TBA. The Sheriff's Institution Express. Um, it's great. Um, so hopefully that isn't. It shows what happens.
Well, is it simple?
It's how they, there are two there to help. But it's not very easy. It, it, the community left a guy after he testified. The community didn't, they didn't. Didn't have an S.
It's very. I think we, we could, one day.
Hello. They follow, we see there's a lot of vaccinations. Uh, I know we've been to something where they might, maybe there's. Uh, you.
Only if we can ask them that.
Yeah, there's a, it goes around.
I don't have a snack, does it?
Uh, an officer.
I don't know what's.
The lady that did the inspection, she went out.
The doctor.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's coordinate like a.
Oh, and then.
Free shipping. Uh, as.
Where they can register online. Which I think I keep going off.
Okay.
Oh, was with a chip?
Yeah. Right, then I would.
Sure.
At least you would like to.
Yes. I like it. I like that. Let's, uh. Okay. The manager for a person. Like the second. I didn't second all this favor. Very true.
You have, you have one? Consider that they got the.
The number.
Okay. Need a check for twenty two hundred and fifty dollars. And up to the state of. The American made the statute. This is a memo from Texas going to state. They can never see, I can imagine you.